I've got an added comment on that. I don't want to... You both can't stand me.
Come on, stay there.
Sure. My other, my added comment too is to where on the trucks, I think that there is a difference too between a truck that's, and it kind of mentions this, a truck that's licensed and compliance with state law and one that isn't. And it's like, I think there's a big difference between a truck that's licensed and moves every day and one that's just sitting there.
Right.
Well, not licensed and junk and sitting there. So to me, and it's like, I, I know some people in here.
I don't know if you want to go down that road.
Yeah.
I wouldn't go down that road.
My truck's broken. I don't have the money to fix it. Can't get away.
We're sending it to you.
But that's why we're having this discussion.
You're allowed to have as many as you can.
Yeah, how many can you have sitting around and on, on what?
That's, that's true. I think that's, that's where these guys come in. In other words, when you make an application, they've got to go look at your property. They've got to look at who's around you. They've got to look at what you have. And then they've got to make an assessment. I mean, that's, they've got, they've got a lot to do and it's not an easy job. But that's, that's the only way we're going to address this. If you can't make a number, because it won't work next to home. So they have to go out when you make your application and say, is this, in your case, you're right next to the, I honestly didn't know you were there. Or honestly, I drive by there every day. So.
Maybe I need to change the color of my dumpster.
That's what I would.
It might depend on how much acreage you've got.
Yeah. Well, that's, I don't think, I just don't think that this, the way that it's suggested, and that's all I wanted to say, is the way that it was suggested in here, I don't think that's the way that it should be written because that contradicts with being seen.
And not only, not only the acres, John, but how exposed it is to whom, to whom, and how many people. If, if you're in an area where it's not very visible and people don't know that you're there.
Some of that has to be subjective.
Exactly.
It can't be written down as ten twenty.
Exactly.
It might be farmland that's around. Who cares?
For how long though? How long is it going to be? You've got to have some rules that are cut and dried.
Yeah, because I'm like wit, you know? You don't know who's going to come in when it starts selling.
And then we start saying, well, you let him, because he, to somebody, it doesn't look bad.
Well, if somebody moves in next to you.
Well, don't move. Don't move next to the airport if you don't like the airport.
That's right.
What you're saying is already happy.
No, you, you have a tough job, I tell you. Because you're going to, you're never going to get everybody looking. All of our stuff is a little bit too different. But whatever you guys decide on, or we all decide on, it has to be cut and dried. It has to be enforceable.
It needs to be fair.
Fair, cut and dried, and enforceable because everybody else is going to say, well, you let him, you don't let, you let him, and then the new guy can say, well, they've been here, so that's why we let them. Now you don't let this guy. It's a tough, tough ride.
And I think, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead. He can finish.
I didn't know.
I spoke my.
I think in all of the decision and the modification of this, the common thread, if you approve in your decision, it's original charter that your founder has founded on. It says, unless you want to change the original charter idea, then that should be, you know, it's an agricultural base.
People trying to make a living.
Well, if you want this to be measurable and enforceable, I mean, you did it in the residence, you said fifteen percent, right? Of the residence itself can be used. What about the ground? I mean, come up with a percentage, and that's measurable, that's enforceable. You're not going to have the whole place filled with junk, which may be my treasure, their junk.
So bigger lots, smaller lots, upper room, lower room.
Exactly.
So, a lot of cases, the size of the structure that you can build will be determined by the size of your lot because of your offsets. So that's going to hit your planning department. They're going to tell you how big of a building you can put in there. Because it's going to have to be so many feet from your dwelling, so many feet from your back property line, and so many, so the bigger the piece of property, as Joe said, the bigger the building can be.
But then it comes down to how many pieces of what type of equipment are we allowed to have on that? Five acres, seventy acres?
Percentage.
Yeah, you need your percentage of the property to even have that.
So if I've got five acres, you've got to tell me, okay, we can let you use one of those five acres, or half of that acre, or what, somewhere, if that's the route you're going.
Okay, so that's where we're going at now. Let's, let's put out some numbers then. So what do you think?
Twenty percent or fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
I think fifty percent of your property.
I think fifty percent of the fifty percent, there, there should be some buffer. It's almost the same as the building, that was in one of my statements, as the building setback towards like, look, if you want to have fifty percent of yours, they can't, like, you've got to have a twenty foot setback from your, or whatever the setback you guys decide to say, you can't go put your shipping container, you can buy it for really cheap, cheaper than renting a storage shed, for, for two thousand dollars, you can buy a shipping container. It's like, well, you can't put that on your property line. If, if you want to have that, and you're going to store spools of wire in it, you've got to bring that in twenty feet from your property line. It's like, your fifty percent, or whatever the percentage, can't be right up to your property line. It creates a buffer to say, hey, you like a shipping container? Then put it out your back door, not right at your neighbor's property line so that they have to deal with it. There has to be some setback, the same way that you setback with the building.
Percentage can be calculated, but it has to include a certain amount of setback so that you're not impacting your neighbor.
Yeah, and I think that if you put up a privacy fence, that setback can diminish.
See, I would diminish. Privacy fence is just a bonus.
Gary's got a comment here.
Well, we've been focusing on kind of like, what do you want to see? And I think, penetrating from what Jill said, what you should be telling us is, what do you want to let your neighbors do to you?
Yes.
Don't think about what you want to do on your property. What do you want your neighbors to be able to do on their property? And I think if you think about that, it might make things look a little different.
Kind of weigh it out.
And then you look at the whole purpose of zoning, and it's to make sure that compatible uses are there. And we can certainly change zoning to commercial if it makes sense, and there's a process to go through that. So there's a lot of options already built in. If, you know, what you see in residential, it's a residential zone for a reason. If it doesn't make sense to be a residential zone any longer, zoning can be changed. And it's all input from the town and, and the citizens. So I guess, it's kind of like, should we just own everything commercial and do what we want to? Or is there a reason that it's residential?
Then it opens up that hole again in worms for the neighbors.
Yeah, what do you want? Yeah, what do you want next door to you?
The way I look at all the, or all the laws that were in place was, why were they written? Why are they there? They're not just there because somebody put them in. There was something that caused, caused that to be put down on, on paper. So just like, just like John said, why? Why is it there? Why, why do we need it? And look at that and say, okay, is this going to affect me? How is this going to affect my neighbor? Or how, what's this neighbor going to do to me? And is this, you know, can I live with it? So think of that, every, every single one of these, just think of that. Why is it there? Is it going to, you know, pertain to me and my business, or my neighbor? So. It's different where I live compared to where you guys are at. I'm on smaller acreage. But I still see, you know, we were the oldest KOA on record. So I still have a few trailers in the area that I, but you know what? It's part of my neighborhood. It's, it's who we are. We've got a very diverse bunch of people in that little subdivision. But it's going to be the same where you guys are at. You're going to have newcomers coming in that aren't going to have the same agricultural look. They're not going to like baling being done at eight at night, or four in the morning. You know, and that's where it's going to really affect you is when people that are going to be coming in are going to look at this and say, well, why is it roped this way? My family were dairy farmers down in West Jordan. They got forced out because of the smell. People were moving in right next to the dairy. They'd been there for over a hundred years. But yet, city comes out, a bunch of people that didn't know a farm said, you've got to contain the smell to your land. Is that possible for a dairy farm? No, it's not. But that's what's going to happen here is, we all have, you know, about the same like-mindedness. You want to have your property rights. You want to be good neighbors. But you're going to start having people coming in that don't want the agricultural side. They want the beauty of nature, but not the noise, the smell, the look of nature.
And we're all going to keep the beauty of nature. We don't keep agriculture here.
Exactly. That's what that feels like. They don't, well, some people don't see that side.
That's why they need to move back forward.
But I'm just saying, you know, that's the other side, and that's where most of these things are coming from. The big cities are coming from. They're coming from that point of view, saying, well, you just can't have it at all. And we're just the opposite. We're saying, we want you to have it, but we want to be in compliance with what they require.
I don't know if I should tell you first to what I'm about to say, but I came up with a real good solution at one point. It doesn't sound real fair to newcomers, but it sounds really fair to the people who are here. You could draw a line in the sand today, say, okay, no more businesses allowed in Daniels whatsoever in the RA zones. You can't take any more employees on. You can't take any more equipment, no more buildings, anything. And if you feel like you've got to grow, go somewhere else to grow your business. And then, and then, you know, the ones that are zoned right are good. Don't have to worry about it. It would, it would eventually take care of itself. Everybody would either move on or stay where they're at. And I don't see, I don't hear too many residents standing up and saying, hey, this is what's bothering me. We need to fix this. I, I don't know.
I agree too, because I, I don't know of one complaint. How can we change this, these provisions in which we know what's wrong?
That's the thing. We haven't enforced it.
Oh, you haven't?
Because that's why we're saying that, you know, ninety percent of business are not in compliance. So if we enforced them, we'd have everybody screaming.
So is it just residents, or is it businesses?
It's businesses.
This is as much of a complaint role as anything.
There's no complaints because everybody's just living with what we have. But yet, what we're saying is, we can't honestly issue the business license to these people because they're not in compliance. So when they come in for their annual review, we're like, well, technically, you don't, you're not in compliance. And we're still issuing you permits. What's wrong with that?
And then to your question, I, I've had folks come in that are residents talking about a business that is licensed in the town. And I've had that mult, from all ends of the town for multiple reasons that may or may not have been even, you know, my, because like Eric said, they hated their dog, but they came up with another reason. So that's.
They'll pretty much go through the whole room, and I, I bet I've had a verbal complaint on every business in there.
Jill got really.
So that was, that was the issue, is how much time is the town going to spend chasing, chasing these down and raising the taxes of the residents to enforce code when we can just fix it? So this is the attempt up in there.
Kim?
I was a little bit taken back when I came in and, and see all the business people, and you don't really see anybody, it's just the resident that's, that's the one that said...
Well, John mentioned that last week. He sent out a letter on everyone.
So what, what do I surmise from that? I surmise that you guys, I'm talking to the businesses, because there might be some people in here that's residential, but you seem to be doing a pretty good job because they're not here tonight. That's not to say that there hasn't been some talk in the past, but the fact that they're not here might suggest it's not that big a problem. The other comment that I made, that I heard was, you know, we, we put the numbers out, it's cut and dried. Well, you need to watch legislation and how it works. State of Utah, they'll pass legislation, next thing you know, the courts go in and straighten it out. Then they amend it. So it's a working process all the time. It's really not this cut and dry that you say. But you try to get the most information you can, carry it forward, make the codes, try and make it happen. And you're going to be making some adjustments. You're going to be making some amendments. But Mr. Waterman has, has taken and said, I reviewed every sentence in this document, and I've rewritten it. Here you go. Man, not too bad. So if you ever get tired of what you're doing, there's jobs here.
Yes, there are.
I, I think it's been amazing what the little township's been able to do in the last seven, eight years. It's totally amazing. And when you think about it, you watch how that growth comes out and just stops. You watch about the, the dog catcher that runs around trying to catch your dog, and you say, hey, you're not supposed to be in our town. We take care of that ourselves. He said, you bill for a hundred bucks, say, I'm not going to pay that. Well, technically, it's the law. You don't have to pay that. Might cost you a little money to fight it.
More than little.
But I am very surprised that we don't have a lot of residents here that's saying, gosh, that truck blows a lot of smoke. Gosh, that makes a lot of noise. And you know that guy in the dumpster business? He's cleaning his cans over there all the time. Well, there's still neighbors down there. Works for him. And he is going to paint these garbage cans orange. That's great.
Do you know the history to that, Kim? We send every business owner a letter saying we're going to discuss these things. For the last meeting, and, and most of them heard about it through that. We did not send a letter to any town residents that don't own a business.
But you directed that, did you not, Mr. Waterman?
I don't think I did. I, with a lot of help, we passed out probably over two hundred flyers. And I, I, if, if this is the response, awesome. They don't care.
Well, I would think, I think that's a courageous attempt myself, especially in the personal.
Well, we've got one of your flyers.
No, it's only business owners. How many business owners?
Everybody that had a lighter in the town got a flyer.
How many is that?
Forty-two.
That's a lot less than my two hundred flyers we passed out.
Oh, yeah. What's your point?
I'm saying, you're, you're not that biased on the, you've got two hundred people you notified that you're going to have this discussion that are not business owners. Forty-two business owners, and this is who should. Yeah, or they are.
Yeah.
You got a flyer, and you came because of the flyers?
A damn neighbor came in, stuck it on me. I know, it's a jerk.
I will tell, I will tell everyone here, the city, there is, there's a legal way of, of making announcements of the citizens, and we've certainly fulfilled that. And then the first go around, we thought, well, let's, maybe do a little bit more, and we'll send it out to the folks who this is going to affect. And so we thought we did a good job there. And then, and then we hear, oh, we didn't do a good job because we didn't send a letter to every single solitary person. So you really can't win for losing trying to go over and above, trying to help the community, trying to work out this issue. So, you know, was it perfect? Apparently not, but we sure tried to make everyone pay attention to what it is.
John and Kim, that was precisely my point earlier, is that sometimes there are very few small handful of very vocal people who make the complaints, but generally, most people who are not here are probably pretty happy with what we've done in Daniel. And it's not a hundred percent true, but I think that's what we can look at and say, if they're not here and they're not complaining.
They've lost their chance.
I wouldn't say that exactly, but I would say, then maybe it isn't quite as critical, maybe it isn't quite as crucial.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm still worried about the fact to where on the north property, or the north city limit of Daniel, and these, these guys are my, you know, friends, but it's like, you've got industrial, it's in Heber City, Emerald Wausatch County, and if, if it's not, you know, homemade based businesses and modified a little bit better, I mean, so you've got, you know, Reggie or RJ Enterprises.
That's in your way.
Well, but it's like, those guys, they're, I mean, they're both friends. I graduated high school with them. Like, I, I, it's nothing personal of them, but it's like, they can come this direction so easily. And then you, you bump one, you bump up to Airport Road, and it's like, if those guys want to expand, and they say Daniel City doesn't really have ordinances, and they don't enforce them, and it's like, let's just go buy a, a five acre piece over in a cul-de-sac where the mayor lives, and let's stack a bunch of stuff there. And so, I mean, I think that it's coming back to where even though there's not a lot of complaints that's happening, that, uh, what, the, um, I don't want to call you brother. What Mr. White said is where it's at. I'm worried about what, I'm worried about the people who aren't here. I'm not worried about the people here. I'm worried about the people who aren't here and what they could do to our town and the agrarian lifestyle that everybody moved out here for.
Well, I think we've taken both verbal comment, we've taken letters that John's received, I've received, and some Eric's received a few letters. We're appropriate for, this is all going to a hat, a big toll that we're going to be talking about, and you're all going to be welcome to the next meeting. You'll be able to check in to see when the next public hearing on this subject matter comes up, which I think will be next month, at least one of the agenda items. We will not be spending four hours on it next month, for sure. I would like any other new comments from anybody that, that might have something new to add to this conversation right now, to have anything different.
Does the city have a master list of the residents, their address, phone number, and email address?
I believe not. I believe we have a voting, we have a voting through a voting registration, but as an individual town resident, and we have houses and different people and different families that own houses and things, we do not have a full or accurate list of all residents. Is that, is that accurate?
But we're working on it.
Wouldn't that be a good idea for everybody to communicate on a voluntary basis that want their name on the list?
It would be very helpful, especially for emergencies, especially for anything else or any...
Or make a recommendation, or figure out a truck parked in their own place.
I'll do both.
It saves you guys a lot of work just in an email. So.
Okay, report these two to death?
I think, I think we do have a bias group here because I can tell you, being a business owner, you learn to jump through hoops, and you're a fighter, and you learn to do these things, and when something comes up, you get involved. And if you just have a job and you go to work every day, this isn't that important.
No.
And so that's, that's why that you have such an outpouring of the business owners. If you try and be legal, there are so many hoops you have to jump through to be legal that it keeps you on your toes. If you don't keep up, you're suddenly illegal. So I think that's the reason that we have so many of them.
All right. Any last comments amongst the council? The chairman attended a motion to close a public hearing and move on.
A motion to close the public hearing. Both to move on.
Your motion, give me a second.
Second.
Second. Any last discussion before we move on? On favor, uh, public hearing closed.
I was just going to comment on that.
Yeah?
Do you guys know how to get in contact with people if you want to? Through email and stuff? Go to danielutah.org, and everybody's emails are listed there. If that's hard, drop a letter off at our, any of our residences, or whatever, right, Eric, or the mayor?
Yep. Then you'd be conducting business.
Town business. It might be okay. But please, we do want your input.
The chairman attended a motion for another public hearing with regard to the 2015-2016 budget amendment and 2016-17 budget amendment resolutions for adoption. The first, the second.
Thanks to you all. Thank you.
I know you guys are about to go and spend money on it.
Trust you.
We're, we're alive. We don't have any.
I'm going to leave.
No.
So we had a...
Yeah, when you met here.
We're just...
Whenever you guys are ready.
Call number nine.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly do, um...
You want a public hearing now?
Uh, we had, we did have a first for a public hearing for the town. I don't know what lot number it is. It's next to the new nursery.
Well, it's not a nursery, it's a landscaping business that grows trees.
I'll thank back the chairman. Oh, no, that's... Accept the motion, and we're going to move number nine, which is business license allocations up. I hear that he's got quite a few. We're not going to hold them up any longer, and so we're going to move number nine up. And, so over here.
Okay, if you're brave enough to apply for a license.
I am.
So Heber's here. He's got a new business he's starting, Full Scope, and we have a renewal of, of Lone Peak Sprinklers and Housekeeping by Dawn. His application is attached there. If you have any questions for him, he's here tonight.
This is this?
Yeah, Heber right tonight.
Contract sewing. We do sewing for different, different businesses.
Embroidery?
No, not embroidering, it's...
Campus work, stuff like that, or?
Yeah. And it's, yeah, we make...
Onings possibly?
There's a few contracts. Hey, it's something nobody ever does, so I understand. We make bags, like suitcases, medical bags. We manufacture them, so we sew them and then put them together.
Do you meet our board house current?
I'm pretty sure. Our sewing machines are kind of loud, but we keep them in the basement, and so they...
In one room, fifteen percent.
The only employees are us, so we have none other.
Yeah.
I think we meet criteria.
Six-year-old boy.
No child labor.
No child labor, not yet.
Sweatshop, but it's just...
That's your own kid's stuff.
Heber had been licensed with the town prior.
Is that the Full Scope company? Or the Full Scope business? Or is that a different?
No, no. I, I had a business years back that was an interior design and concentration business.
Okay. So what's, is this a different person? So what's Full Scope, Heber?
Full Scope is a sewing business.
Oh, that's the sewing business?
That is the sewing business. I did have a, a business years ago, but, um, that was years ago. And I've never had any problem then, so.
And cars and parking and everything's inside the house, and you're just sewing and doing your thing?
Just doing our thing. I mean, we, we don't have anybody, nobody comes to the place. We do all pickup and delivery is included in our service, so. You have a question from the council?
Not a, not a huge impact on, on the road, so.
No. And Lone Peak Sprinklers is?
Yeah, in the corner.
Oh, okay. Nate?
Yeah, Nate.
That's where the junk is.
Yep, Nate Orton.
I have a question about that one.
Ask him by Nate?
Yeah.
Dog?
I have a question about mates. It's listed as a home occupation, correct?
Excuse me? Yeah.
Okay. He doesn't live there, so that's not his home?
Who, who are the occupants, Jay?
He rents it.
Only going to be an occupant?
He promised that when he bought it.
But never moved in?[1666.08]
He's never lived there. He's rented it to a couple of different people.
Mm.
So, that's a question.
That is a question.
So if we're reviewing his business license when he's renewing his business license, then possibly that could be discussed.
Certainly until now, I mean, I don't know if any of us knew that he was or wasn't living there.
I assumed he was. That's what he told us.
He told us.
Since you live down the street from him, you see it every day. Well, in our code, does it matter?
Yes. Home occupation states it's in the residence.
But I don't think his license is a home occupation actually.
Yeah.
All trees and stuff like that were agricultural.
Everything's agricultural there because he doesn't retail out.
Isn't also a C2 zone? No, also?
No. So does that not apply to him then if it's not a home occupation?
Well, everything in his yard is ag for sure, but I don't know if he has an office in there. Does he? He's not retailing out of that spot.
No.
But I don't know if he has an office in there. Is that what he's saying?
I don't either.
No, but they do park all their equipment. They have their trucks there and their employees park there during the day. I mean, I, I drive by there every day. I just see it.
Yeah, but we can say that to every one of them.
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll leave around and say that to everybody.
But then we shut everyone down or just this guy?
Then eliminate me?
I don't know what we do, guys.
I don't either. I really don't. But since his comes up and we've just had to...
And that might be a fact and at this point, you brought attention...
I mean, you don't have a signed complaint, but I'm here as a planning commissioner, so...
I understand that.
It's discussion. It's not a complaint. You don't have to act upon it. But I'm just bringing it up.
Jay, does our current code say they have to live on a property?
Yes.
Well, if it's listed as a home occupation...
Under home occupation.
That's what I'm saying. Under home occupation. Does it say that right now? But if it's coming under agricultural, it's a different thing, but then with agricultural, it technically doesn't need the business license.
And we've also talked about the fact that we are not enforcing the code because it's not currently meeting our needs. That's what it's about. So if you don't have a written complaint, you don't have to act upon it.
Stop this guy.
But it's just, it's a discussion.
Is it, is there a problem with, since you live on it as a citizen living down the street, has there been any problems with it?
I haven't had any problems with it. I would not file a complaint. I would not come in with a written complaint, but it's just...
Well, right now, the last few months, there's certainly been a few that have brought that detention and then obviously that'll need to be looked at when we finally get the final draft.
Exactly. Something to consider in the code.
Yeah, we may want to attend to our needs.
Where does he go?
He's over there.
Careful, there are checks everywhere.
Actually, I have bigger issues with somebody that tells me they're going to do something and then they don't.
Yeah. That was when Mike and Lynn...
Yeah, I do remember that they were going to live there. I remember that.
That's what we were told.
That's what we were told. Which helped made a decision in some in favor for that comment?
Yeah.
By the way, we've had no complaints on that neighborhood since he moved in there. There's not one.
No. Which is really good. We like that.
Which is a change.
Yes.
I don't know if it's good, but it's a change.
There's no reason for complaints.
Okay. Business license, anything else?
That's that's it for the business license.
You can stay as long as you want, but you're taken care of. You're done.
We're good.
You're good?
We're good.
Thank you so much.
Go and have a big meal down at the Burger Joint and enjoy evening.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you guys. Eber.
Do we have a list? Do we give us a full copy?
Do we just...
Are you wondering how you get it?
Get it so I can...
What happens is they will go in and get copies. Lynn will take copies of it and then you send a copy to the planning. Walk us through your thing, Lynn.
I receive the checks, make copies of the checks and the license, give it to Kathy Jo. She keeps a copy of the license, as do I, and then she will mail you your original license.
There we go.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Well, that was clearer than the code.
You'll get it sooner or later.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay, that concludes number nine. We'll go back to number four and I'll bring back up the chairman attended a motion to leave a regular hearing and go back into public hearing. Excuse me, go into a public hearing for the 2015-16 budget amendment and the 2016-17 budget amendment resolution for adoption.
So moved.
The first?
Second.
The second. All in favor?
Aye.
Back in public hearing for 2015 budget amendments.
Okay, you all have a copy there in your packets? So the...
When the fun begins.
The reason why these budgets had to be amended is because we had the road funds here last year's budget, but promises by the contract that the work was going to be accomplished by the end of June and it was not done until the second of July. Any other two months of the year wouldn't have mattered, but where it was one budget ending and another beginning, you have to go through this process. You will see the middle column is the changes that were made from the left-hand column, which was the last approved budget, amended approved budget for 2016. The state has not allocated the Class C road fund's sixth allotment because of the problems they've had with the House bill and how taxes were supposed to be handled, the additional taxing. So I reduced the Class C road fund. I don't know when we're going to see that amount, but it will probably come in this next fiscal year.
I'll take that as.
So that increased the funds needed to carry over to balance the budget. Then down under highways and streets, we actually only expended ninety-two-hundred-twelve dollars of the one-hundred-sixty thousand. A lot of road repairs, engineering and so forth were considered there. So that left carryover funds of one-hundred-fifty-thousand-seven-eighty-eight, which will be added into the next year's budget that you see on the next amendment. The other figures, where there's nothing, the middle column remains the same.
At this point, say, the resolution for that particular budget. So with that being said, from Lynn, I have a resolution, DR 216-10-03A. Effective date, October 3rd, 2016. Short title resolution approving an amendment to Daniel Town general budget for fiscal year 2015-16. The purpose, the purpose of this resolution is to approve and adopt the proposed amended budget presented in the public hearing October 3rd, 2016 to adjust the revenue and/or expenses. Resolution whereas the legislative body of the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, having reviewed, considered and adopted the budget prepared by the budget office of the town of Daniel, having held a public hearing for public comment prior to the final budget adoption and having adopted the budget, do hereby wish to amend the adopted budget for fiscal year 2015-16. The public hearing was properly noted and public comment solicited and considered. It is resolved, accepted and approved by the governing legislative body of the town of Daniel, but the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, hereby adopts the amended budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2015 through June 3rd, 2016. A copy of the amended budget is attached. Chair, entertain a motion? The resolution?
So moved.
First?
Second.
And the second. Any last discussion?
You know, I'm seeing on the, like the weed strain chemicals. I know we purchase some chemicals. I'm not seeing those on the budget. Might have been placed in it. Because we amended that or should have been.
You were still under the five hundred.
Right.
But you mean it should have the exact amount?
That's what I was thinking. Is that different? It's just carrying across. Is that what you're doing?
I just carried it across. I don't have the...
Okay.
Exact amount expended.
Okay.
But when Ben Probst does the, your agreed upon procedure or audit, he will have the accurate figures for everything expended.
It's minor.
Yes.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes.
Okay, the next budget for this current year, 2016-17. In the middle column again is where the, I don't know, changes have been made, the carryover of the road funds, the one-hundred-fifty-thousand-seven-eighty-eight. And I have added one thousand dollars to the info tech. You'll notice in the middle of the page, it was budgeted for one thousand and I made that two thousand. So that made the funds carryover needed at the top in the revenue side to be increased by one thousand dollars in order for the budget to balance. And those are basically the only two changes in this budget.
I do have a resolution here if I can read that. The number would be DR 216-10-03B. Short title resolution approving an amendment to the Daniel Town general budget for fiscal year 2016 and 2017. Purpose, the purposes, purpose of this resolution is to approve and adopt a proposed amended budget presenting, presented in the public hearing October 3rd, 2016 to adjust the revenue and/or expenses. Resolution whereas the legislative body of the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, had a review, considered and adopted the budget prepared by the budget office of the town of Daniel, having held a public hearing for public comment prior to the final budget adoption and having adopted the budget, do hereby wish to amend the adopted budget for fiscal year 2016-17. The public hearing was properly noted and public comment solicited and considered. It is resolved, accepted and approved by the governing legislative body of the town of Daniel, that the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, hereby adopts the amended budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. A copy of the amended budget is attached. Chair, entertain a motion? You have a first?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm kind of asleep over here. I wasn't paying attention. We need to come out of the public hearing.
I was wondering that.
And go back into regular session before we approve these. I'm sorry. I was sleeping over here.
Well, I was running fast, so I apologize. So we do back up to the first resolution?
Yeah. Once we come out of public hearing, then we can go ahead and pass those resolutions.
Okay.
I got in the numbers.
We'll just come back and redo that then after, after the public hearing. So for now...
I'll make a motion to come out of the public hearing.
A motion to come out of the public hearing?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on coming out?
Careful how you say that.
At a budget hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to come back into regular session?
The motion of...
Sound it.
Come back in the regular session.
And to be of a second?
Second.
You have a first and a second to come back in a regular session. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Back into regular session. Apologize for mixing those two up. I, the council let me to reread the resolutions?
No.
Okay. So, let me just please read the DR part of it and then if I can get that back. So, nope, thanks for the correction. We're going to have a vote on DR 216-10-03A, Town of Daniel, Utah municipal resolution. It has to do with the 2015-16 budget amendment. We have a first?
Yeah, so moved.
You have a first, we have a second?
Second.
A first and a second. Any last discussion on the 2015-16 budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2016-10-03. Next resolution is the DR 216-10-03B. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the 2016-17 budget amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2016-10-03B passes. And then we left on number four. I think we covered that. And then we're down to the last, the quarterly update of the 2016-17 budget.
Okay, you have those in your packets as well. They have the handwritten figures on the right-hand column. Shows the revenues that have been received, expenses that have been expended thus far. On revenues on the general amended, so this is according to the budget that you just approved. Twenty-four percent of revenues have been received, which is just about one quarter. And less on the expenses that have been spent so far, eighteen percent. And you can see down there on the road funds that they've, we've got just under twenty thousand dollars cushion there, so we can still do a little more work. The second is the water fund. Once again, we've received about twenty-four percent in our budget of revenue. Expanded thirteen percent. And we have paid one of the two bonds payments with interest in the bottom part there. And then on Stormhaven, we've received thirty-nine percent of the revenue, so that's, it's, I'm thinking more than we budgeted and have expanded twelve percent. According to the budget, we're still going to be in the hole. We do have coming up later this month, the initial workshop for CDNG funds, which we will be applying for. Once again, for some project on the Stormhaven area.
Now, did I hear that, what was the amount that they're giving to this, was it Wasatch County?
It's Wasatch and Summit Counties together is five hundred thousand dollars this time and it was four hundred thousand dollars last time, so it's still not a huge amount.
Yeah, but we get our share.
Yeah, we have.
I guess I shouldn't say that.
Any questions for Lynn with regards to the update?
Good for doing all that.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for us?
No.
Okay. I take care of that number five. Number six, engagement of Ben Probst with Gilbert and Stewart to perform the agreed upon procedure for the 2015-16 fiscal year.
I have been in touch with Mr. Probst. I do not have his engagement letter in hand. It should be forthcoming to be signed by you if the council approves that you do want to engage him to, to perform. It should once again be the agreed upon procedure as per less than what would be required for a full audit in our revenue.
Wasn't that down to like five grand or, it was probably less once we went to this new procedure, wasn't it?
Three thousand dollars.
Two thousand, instead of five, instead of five, right.
Yes.
So the chair attended a motion to be able to engage Gilbert and Sons to do our auditing again this year?
So we, do you have the amount or we don't?
We do not have the amount.
He's mentioned verbally, it should be the three thousand again. We've budgeted thirty-five hundred, but that will be contained in a letter.
Is that the cost you're talking, the cost that you charge us?
Yeah. Just thinking of a motion to engage them without a prize. So are you ready for a motion?
Phone's ready.
I make a motion that we go ahead and sign that letter up to the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to engage Probst up to a dollar amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That work, Lynn? That work?
Yes.
Okay.
Your brother's not, John?
Yeah.
Did you want to look at that, John, again?
No, I just wanted it three grand.
Okay.
With that, no big deal really. I think it will be.
It might be. We both agree.
Okay, on to item number seven, Daniel municipal water issues as necessary. We have one of our water folks here. Is there anything that we hung around just for this?
Yeah, I was, I was going to continue this because it's been long tonight, but I think I can cover it real quick. The handout you posted right here. We're looking at the, this new elementary school over on the rant, is it ranch? But they, they put in a four-inch meter over there. And we have not addressed that issue, as you can see in about the middle of the first page. The three inches is the biggest one we've put a price on. So, whatever the council comes up with there. Ryan Taylor is suggesting maybe we use the three fifteen number, which means the four-inch would cost the same as the three.
I bet there's a reason behind that.
Well, when I talked to Ryan, Ryan, go ahead and tell him why that might be.
So, so what we tried to do is size based on the impact fee and then the user rate. We used the, basically the peak, the amount of water that each meter could flow. So, you know, a one-inch has a smaller impact on the system than a four-inch because if you leave your garden hose open, it'll take a long time to drain the tank with a one-inch meter. With a four-inch meter, you could theoretically do a lot more, use a lot more of the system capacity. So we use the same logic on the, on the meters, on the monthly fees. And on both, the impact fee and the user rates, we cut things off at three-inch and said we want to do above three-inch only on a case-by-case basis after we've looked at the waters model and figured out whether or not we can accommodate it. So I suggested to Kim that either, for, for the purposes of what the school's doing, the difference between a three and a four is probably not that great than the volume of water they're planning to take. And so we could just use the three fifteen that's in there. Alternatively, I believe the table I used to generate that goes all the way up to eight and we, we cut it off at three-inch because that was the maximum meter size we wanted in the system without special approval. uh, without special approval. And so I can go back to that spreadsheet and figure out what we calculated for a four-inch, using the same logic as what's shown there. Uh, I didn't get that done before the next meeting.
But that can be done when we, when they find it online and then we start giving them a bill, that can, that figure can be given to them?
So it would be the end of this month, but we would need that because they'll be getting their first bill next month, if I understand that, our process. So, and I can do that this week. I just didn't get it done before this meeting.
So, let me ask you this, Ryan. Plans were submitted and everything was requested for a three-inch meter.
No, they've requested a four-inch meter.
The plans and everything was originally four-inch?
Yes.
Okay.
Back years ago, when we set up the system and we did our master plan and everything, we said three-inch and above, we want to do special modeling and special approval. They've always wanted a four-inch meter, and we talked about the costs and how that was more expensive and then proceeded.
Okay.
So I'd say this one would met the criteria and it was approved.
Eric, uh, did you negotiate with them the price of this four-inch meter?
No. They paid our cost. He was in a bind with our contractor, and so that, we just made it with that. We made that call, purchase a meter, and they'll just have to pay the cost, which they've done, or will be doing.
They have done. Obviously, they'll check on Saturday.
They have done. So, we, normally, we would give them that option to buy, but they wasn't on, we weren't on top of it to tell them to get it. And our contractor was at a point where we would start being, we would start getting billed for holding them up, so we just went ahead and made the call and purchased the meter, and it would bill them after.
What was the difference in cost between that three-inch and the four-inch?
So, I think we're talking about different costs. The, the cost, difference in cost to be about five hundred dollars between the three and the four-inch meter, uh, for purchasing a meter. The difference in the impact fee was pretty substantial, and I suspect if I find that table, the difference in the monthly rate is probably a hundred dollars a month or so? More, with a bigger meter that has the, has the potential to.
Yeah, I was saying, probably about that.
But we're, we're only gonna charge them for the three-inch?
Also, if we need, my recommendation was if we needed a decision tonight, that if we just went to our biggest meter and used that, that number because it's in our ordinance, I don't think we would be that far off. What the school's trying to do, where it comes in, I, I think we'd be, you know, that, that floor rate is, is acceptable. We can monitor the floor rate and see. If we don't need the answer tonight, then I'd suggest we go back to that table and, that I used to calculate the one through three, and I'll calculate the four based on the same logic.
Okay, so clarify, isn't the four-inch just on the fire line?
No.
It is.
They have four-inch and a fire line.
And a fire line.
So we do need an answer tonight to bill for this month, right?
Well, knowing that there's a two-inch meter also. Correct?
Although, the, the detail that we took was the one that, that their engineer provided. And they had, has a four-inch main meter and a two-inch bypass meter.
Oh, it's on bypass?
It was just a bypass meter, and so we removed the bypass meter. I figured, the, the cost of that bypass meter was a few thousand dollars, and the amount of water that would run through the bypass meter would not add up to a few thousand dollars because, you know, it's really just there for emerg, you know, if school's in session and we have to take that meter out of service, we have a bypass, but you leave, you bypass it for a day or two, it would be the only time that two-inch would flow. So we took that out and it's just added an extra check though.
Okay.
So, so right now, they only have the one meter for, the one four-inch meter to service the line, fire line, and then the fire hydrant line are two separate lines that go in the building. So there's three connections from our main line into their school.
Okay. I was thinking the four-inch was their fire line. I didn't realize we would run on a fire line and meter.
I thought that for a while too, but no, they've got the fire line and the, and their four-inch meter.
So wouldn't that be advantageous to check your, your, uh, schedule on a, on a four-inch?
Yes.
So I'm gonna ask the sort of the same question John did. So you said, you know, you can calculate that over, or over above?
Yes.
But your recommendation was to stay at three, or just discussion was to stay at three?
So the discussion was if we needed to make a decision tonight, we have a table that goes up to three, just take, take the highest number that's there. If we don't need an answer tonight, which it sounds like we have some time, then my recommendation is let me go back to that table. There was, it's an algorithm that calculates all of them, so whatever it was for three, we would just apply it to four and use that number.
I'd like to see him just take the time and look at that number himself, Joe.
Well, we might have a problem with that because I'm pretty sure this number right here came up in discussion with the school district, monthly fee.
Did a few years ago, but.
I think that that's in there, and it will be in their notes.
Between their binder, their contract?
What, what, what were, will they find in the notes? What were they told?
They were, that's what I'm, I'm thinking. They were told the three-inch meter. They went with four, so, 'cause it's not even in here.
I can go back to my emails and figure out what I sent them. I know we'd estimated, based on the usage, they told me I had calculated what their monthly bill would be on overages. But I don't think we talked about the base amount. I, I don't remember. I'll have to go back and look.
Okay. Because I believe that we did discuss that, and they wanted to know how much their monthly bill would be, and I believe we plugged them in a number in our, in our discussion with the school district.
And we talked about lots of numbers, but, I mean, user rates changed, so, and that was at least a year, if not a year and a half ago, that we would have done, done that, and so as rates changed, and they have to understand rates change.
Do we need to, yeah, do we need to do that, say? This vote and then make this.
Well, he's gonna need a number before the bills go out for this month.
We don't need a bill this month because we just, it's not till next month we're gonna send out the bill.
Yeah, the water bills go out before you guys meet.
Yes.
So, so my suggestion would be, they never work, my suggestion.
They do.
Your wife's got your gun changed.
Can we pass a resolution that says with, if we're within a hundred dollars of, of the three-inch meter? That we did, we're authorized to bill. For instance, if the four-inch meter was three-seventy-five, according to what Ryan had and what have you, then we would be authorized to bill, the water department would be authorized to bill the school the first of November.
I don't mind if we make that decision tonight, if everyone has a question or not. Is it a hundred bucks, a hundred fifty bucks?
Well, I don't know. If you do a linear fit, you go three times from one inch to two inch, and you go three times from two inch to three inch, so you go three times from three to four, you're nine hundred bucks. Probably not linear, but that's what it is if you do it.
Basis from seventy to the one-twelve to three-fifteen, that increase, I mean, should put you about six hundred bucks for the four-inch meter.
Do you want to throw a two-hundred dollar figure in? No figure, sixty to eighty percent more.
Just basing it off of, you know, each increase that you have, it gets pretty substantial, and, you know, the four-inch would be a two-hundred bucks.
I'm gonna withdraw that suggestion. I, I think that looking at this, if we could make a, a special billing for the school after the town council meets, uh, November.
November seventh will be the next meeting.
That's a good idea.
And their billing can go out after you decide.
There we go.
Well, and if, if Brian comes across something in his notes.
I know we had a lot of discussions on, they asked a lot of questions, so let me go back to all my emails that I have.
I think, I think we actually did that in a meeting. I think Terry Schumaker asked that question. I believe it's in his notes, because I think it's in my.
And if we, if we have quoted him estimated numbers, we should stick by him?
That was my thought, but.
The keyword being estimate.
If, if the, if the meter, what they had originally on there, something's changed.
Yeah.
Then, then.
I thought we'd be able to update that.
Yeah, if they quoted a three-inch meter and they went to a four, then they're opening a whole can of worms.
Well, let's put that on the agenda for next month.
Okay. Have a resolution prepared.
Yep.
And we'll decide on it.
Obviously, we just need to add to this resolution.
Yeah.
If we're gonna have a four-inch meter, we might as well put it on there, be consistent.
That's about seventy-five percent.
Has it been eight?
Approximately.
Okay, so we'll wait for that further information from you, and we'll have it on the agenda next month.
I'll check my notes, see if I can, see if I wrote that down yet.
I think it would be, I'm trying to remember, it would be, you would ask the question, I would follow.